One word now to item number 11. A rule call.
Suarez.
Mary Saminiego. Oh, I'm so sorry.
Suarez.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Maniscalco.
Here.
Capine.
Here.
Miranda.
Here.
Vera.
Here.
And Reddick.
Captain.
I apologize.
We're forgiven.
Thank you. I'm Mary Saminiego, Land Development Coordination. Item number 11 is REZ 1901. It's a rezoning request for at 100 West Davis Boulevard from RS 50 to PD for detached, single-family residential uses.
Good evening, Council. Jennifer Malone with your Planning Commission staff. We are on Davis Island within the Davis Island Urban Village. This is Central Tampa Planning District. This is West Davis Boulevard. There's a variety of housing. There's really a mix of housing types on this portion of West Davis Boulevard. We have the bay over here and over here. Further north, of course, is the Tampa General Hospital. The adopted future land use is residential six. Directly to the north is a different land use. The brown is residential 35. That allows consideration of multifamily as well as other uses. And across the street is residential 10. But this residential six is a very low-density residential. It allows six dwelling units per acre, and it's a different development pattern than what we would see right next door, which is the residential 35. So it's expected to have a different development pattern of single-family detached is the development pattern of the residential six. So we did find this consistent with the comprehensive plan. We did find that this is a compatible infill development. The area is planned for up to six units per acre. We did a density calculation on the site, and it would be an overall density of three units of the acre, which is consistent with that residential six future land use category. We found that it would not alter the character or development pattern of the Davis Island's urban village, and we did find that consistent. But if you have any further questions, I am available. Thank you.
Any questions from council? Thank you.
Mary Saminiego for the record. I have a revised staff report. It is revised because there were a couple typos in it, so I will distribute those. Also for distribution, just to verify that you received it, I don't know if it got in the quasi-box or not, is a packet of information from the surrounding property owner or opposition.
So I provided enough comments for this attorney and clerk.
So Jennifer stated we're on Davis Islands. Here is the subject property. It's currently zoned RS 75. The property is approximately 21,260 square feet, so it's almost a half an acre. That's where Jennifer got the six dwelling units, density of six dwelling units an acre. It's about a half an acre, so there would be three dwelling units. To the north and across Davis Boulevard West is the RM 24 zoning district. The surrounding neighborhood is RS 75. And then directly across the street, let me zoom out a little bit more. You can see there's RS 60 zoning, which allows at a density of generally 10 dwelling units per acre, 60 square foot, 6,000 square foot lots and 60-foot lot widths. And then further away, you have more RM 24 zoning districts and planned developments and the RM 35, which is even at a higher intensity. So really, this lot is at the very edge of the RS 75 zoning district. Whenever we do a review of requests that's asking for a lot width lower than the zoning standard it currently is located in, we do analysis of the surrounding property. As I just stated, this property is zoned RS 75, so typically the lot width is 75 feet at least. The applicant is proposing two single-family lots, one with an existing house and a newly-created lot for one single-family house. The existing lot is 1,400 square feet, but the newly-created lot will be a little over 65,000 square feet. I'm sorry, 65 linear feet of width. So 81 houses and lots were evaluated in the red-blue map. These brown areas are, as I said, multifamily development, so they were not included. And then these are RS 60 zoning lots, so those were not included in the study area because it's a different criteria. So of the total of 81 lots, 62% are equal to or greater than 75 feet in width, and leaving a remaining 68% less than 75 feet in width for the overall study area. For the subject block, which is this area, 11 lots were evaluated. 36% were greater than or equal to 75 feet in width, and the remaining 64% were all less than 75 feet wide. And for the subject block face, there are four lots here, and it's a 50-50 split. Staff did not look at the subject block because, again, this is multifamily residential, and these are allowed to have 60-foot wide lots. Here is the site plan the applicant is proposing. There's one existing zoning lot now. They're requesting to split the one existing lot into two lots. There's an existing large house on the property that will remain and be in the new lot. And then this will be the new internal property line. And then this is a existing accessory structure. So with the new property line, a new house could be developed with the existing accessory structure. And then the existing house will remain, and then code requires them to have at least two parking spaces on-site. So a new proposed accessory structure garage is proposed to go with the existing house. So here is one lot with a new house and existing detached structure. Then the second lot is the existing house with a new detached garage. The only waiver that's being required and requested is a separation distance between a principal structure being a house and an accessory structure being a garage. Typically, the standard for the RS 75 zoning district is 10 feet. They are requesting that to go down to 3 feet because of some of the architectural features of the house. That's the only waiver that's being requested.
If I may, Councilman Cohen.
I just want to ask you a question. We've dealt with this property before, haven't we?
I'm sorry, what was that, sir?
City Council has dealt with this property before. It was a couple of years, it was many years. I mean, it was like 2013, 2014, I think. What did we do?
There were, according to records, there were no rezoning applications. There were VRB requests and, I think, subsequent appeals for the placement of a pool and front yard setbacks.
And the wall?
Yes.
Uh-huh.
Yes.
No, no, no. Thank you. I'm trying to, I just want to try to re-acquaint all of us with what we dealt with about this property the last time.
Right.
That's all. I just want to remind everyone that...
Yes, sir.
This isn't the first time that this property's been in town.
Any other questions before I proceed?
Any further questions?
Okay. There are some changes between first and second reading, as reflected in the revised staff report. Just some binder changes to the tree table and some information on the site plan. Based on the development, the DRC committee reviewing the Land Development Code and other applicable code standards, and the compatibility with the surrounding area for the reduced lot width, staff found this consistent with the Land Development Code, provided the modifications based on the revised staff report are approved.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Petitioner, please.
Ms. Gina, for the record, Gina Grimes with the law firm, Appeal Ward Henderson. Could you stop the time for one second? I was just going to hand out the books. I actually set them up there.
Again, Gina Grimes for the record with the law firm, Appeal Ward Henderson, 101 East Kennedy Boulevard. And I'm here tonight representing the property owner, Florida Pride Homes Incorporated. The owner and president of that corporation is Martha Shepley. She's here with me this evening along with her son. She purchased the property back in 2011, so she's lived there with her son for the past eight years. It's currently a single-family home with an accessory structure. And as you saw from the earlier photos, the home is located lengthwise across the various lots. This piece of property has four platted lots. They were platted back in 1924 by DP Davis himself. The parcel was 204 feet wide by 114 feet deep. So it has 21,260 square feet, a half acre on Davis Island. It's a very large lot. We're seeking simply to rezone it from RS 75 to PD, to do what? To allow two single-family detached homes. We are not, with accessory structures, we are not asking for multifamily. I want to make that very clear. The site plan shows two proposed lots. Mary went over with you the configuration of those lots. If you look at this diagram right here, it shows the configuration of the lots a lot clearer. One lot is oversized. It's 139 feet by 114 feet. And then the second lot, Lot 2, is 65 feet by 114 feet. So the reason for this PD is very simple. It's to preserve the existing home and the existing accessory structure on this half-acre lot because both of those structures are listed on the National Register. My client has spent the past eight years carefully renovating that home while she lived in it. Because this is being done to address this unique situation, it really is a textbook case to justify utilization of a PD zoning. It's because of the unique shape of the lots. It's also important to understand that under the RS 75 zoning, right now, we could, in fact, divide this lot up into two lots without a rezoning. Here's an example of what I mean, and then I'll talk to you about what the ramifications are. So without a rezoning, we could divide this lot into a 75-foot lot and a 125-foot lot. However, to do so, as you can see, it would require us to alter the existing structure and the existing accessory structure that both, again, are listed on the National Register. As I mentioned, my client's carefully renovated this structure over the last eight years. The last thing she wants to do is alter the historic footprint of that building, of that structure. So she's proposing to create a second lot on the site, to sell it as a separate detached single-family home, and along with it will be the accessory structure in the rear. That's the existing accessory structure. One of the reasons that she wants to do that is because it's been very expensive to renovate this over the past eight years, and she would like to sell off that second lot to help her fund the continued renovation and maintenance of the existing home. The home right now is for sale. She does not want to sell it. She would like to sell off, rezone the property, sell off the second lot, and then have the ability to stay in the home with her son. We believe that the rezoning is appropriate for several different reasons. It's not only appropriate because it meets code, it's appropriate because it's a reasonable proposal. It's compatible with the surrounding area, as you heard from the planning commission, as well as from the city staff. It's surrounded by property that's more intense than it is. This is the subject property right here. This property right here has a comp plan category of R 50. It allows density eight times more than what is allowed on my client's property right here. This property right here is R 35. It can be six times more dense than my client's property right here. Across the street, R 10. It's one and a half times more dense, and it's also developed with homes that are smaller. This property is R 6. It allows a density of six dwelling units per acre. How many are we proposing? We're proposing half of what the comp plan allows. We're proposing a density of three dwelling units per acre. The zoning designations on the property, surrounding property are also similar. And again, we believe this shows that it's very compatible with, and actually a very good transition, with the surrounding land uses and zonings and comp plans. The R 35, RM 24, RM 24 across the street, the RS 60. In addition, you have the actual surrounding development, and that's important to see. Next door is a vacant lot, which is proposed, it's RM 24, it's proposed right now for town homes. Shortly, short distance down the street, you have apartments. Across the street, you have townhouses and condos. Across, directly across the street, you have the park. And then you have this RS 60 area that has homes that are comparable in size to what we're proposing on this actual piece of property. So again, it's compatible with the surrounding area. It's less dense than what's allowed. It's less dense than the surrounding zoning designations, and it's consistent with the actual surrounding development. The PD also complies with the code for the reasons that are stated in the city's staff report, including their lot study. Lot 1, which is the lot that accommodates the existing structure, as you can see, it is almost double the size that is allowed in the, that's required in the RS 75 zoning district. It's double the minimum lot size. It's a 139-foot wide lot by 114 feet deep. You only have to have 75 feet of width. This parcel is almost big enough to have three homes constructed on it. It's only slightly smaller than what you'd need to have three homes. The staff report also addresses the lot study. And on the subject block, as you can see, you have surrounding property that is, on the subject block, which includes both sides of the block, 64% of the lots are smaller than the RS 75. On the block face, 50% of the lots are smaller than the RS 75. And one of the things the staff considered, and which I argued just now, is that you have to look at the area and the surrounding development. Staff also, as they always do in their staff reports, conducted analysis of the PD requirements that are set forth in 27-136, and have found that it meets all of the requirements that are applicable. Again, they're recognizing that this is a unique situation and a textbook case for why you should use a PD. The other argument that we have as to why this is an appropriate rezoning is the original historic density of this lot. Back when DP Davis platted this as four lots, and that's what this is, four platted lots, theoretically, that's what you would have had. What it turns out that happened was in 1924, '05, he built the first model home on Davis Island, and that was it on Lot 13. Shortly thereafter, the Florida real estate boom bust, and DP Davis lost the property. It was subsequently bought by an engineer, an engineering firm, Ballinger, who then began to construct a second model home right next door. What they ended up doing was, instead of constructing two separate model homes, they combined this home, the two model homes, into one large model home. And the reason they did that was to attract a more affluent buyer. And my point in telling you all this is that this property, this piece of property, was always intended to have somewhere between two and four parcels, four homes on it. So what we're proposing here with two homes is certainly consistent with the original historic density and development pattern that DP Davis himself planned for Davis Island. Also, I want to present to you, and it's in your package of materials, is a letter from the Florida Department of State. What it does is acknowledges that we are proposing this rezoning and states that the fact that we're rezoning the property does not affect its listing on the National Register, so it has no effect on the historic significance of it. Now, very quickly, I want to address the neighborhood opposition, because as you can see, there's quite a few people here. And the problem is, is social media. Basically, what I could garner from what I read on social media is that there is a lot of misinformation and false rumors that were spread about this property from the outset. In fact, I'm going to read to you some posts on social media from Greg Musillo. He starts by saying, and this is what started the social media frenzy, "Is anyone concerned about the rezoning for 100 West Davis from residential to planned development?", which I assume means, quote, "condos, misinformation. It's my view, we don't want to see any residential rezoned for condos." A subsequent post, and this is probably my favorite one of all of them, and that is Wayne Pickard says, "I would certainly participate in a rezoning. What's the zoning for?" So it's almost as if people want to get together and oppose a rezoning just for the sport of opposing a rezoning. They don't want anything to change. Another post, after several people said, "Wait a minute, we looked at the actual PD site plan. It doesn't have multifamily in it. It doesn't allow what you're saying that it allows. The reason they're doing it is for the reasons I just told you here tonight." And after several of those posts, Mr. Musillo responded by saying, "It was mentioned at the meeting that this is most likely a backdoor rezoning request to have the property zoned for condos, and then combined with a condo project to the north. I think we should have two big concerns about it. Do you want a condo project, and do you want to set a precedent for backdoor rezonings? Nothing could be further from the truth. It's a completely false statement. And if necessary, we would be willing to agree to a condition." And you all know, PD, if it says single-family detached, you can't have multifamily. We all know that. But if it would allay the concerns of the neighborhood, we'd be more than willing to add a condition that says no multifamily is permitted on this site. Another concern that was expressed to me by Mr. Bob Bolt, who is, I believe, in the audience tonight, is the fact that the traffic was going to potentially have to back into the right-of-way because of the way the property was divided and the length of the driveways. He was concerned that people would have to back into Davis Islands, West Davis Boulevard. So what we would be willing to do is what you see here. We would be willing, on the new lot, to create some sort of hammerhead to give the ability to turn around on-site and then pull out of the driveways in a forward position. If that will address or allay their concerns, we'd be happy to agree to a change between first and second reading that would show that hammerhead. Another concern that we heard expressed was with regard to the height of the structure. The site plan says 40 feet above the design flood elevation, which on Davis Island and a lot of areas in the city is about to change. What my client was intending to do was to make sure, she was thinking that it was 40 feet from the grade. Actually, what it should be is 35 feet from the design flood elevation. That's the same height as what's allowed everywhere else on Davis Island. The city mentioned that there is a waiver being requested. We'd never included a waiver, and I was informed by the zoning department that there would need to be a waiver to address the closeness of the, of this little bump out on the historic structure, its proximity to the garage. There's supposed to be a 10-foot separation between the garage and the principal structure. There's only three right here. That is, that waiver is something I didn't realize we had to have on a site plan. I always thought the setbacks were, as they're shown on the site plan, you don't have to call them out as separate waivers. But we've modified our site plan. We're willing to include that as a waiver. And we've also revised our narrative, because an issue was made that we didn't have an accurate narrative, and it didn't address the waiver, again, because it was added late in the process. So I'm going to submit to council, it's not your book, a copy of the revised project narrative with a written waiver justification. And the waiver justification in this case is that in order to have an accessory structure here, it's as close to the property line as we can get, at 3 feet. It's almost 8 feet from most of the principal structure. It's just this small little area where it's 3 feet. If that becomes an issue for council, we'd be more than happy to try to somehow address it by making that structure slightly smaller so that no waiver at all would be required. Your staff report states that you, that there are no objections at all from any of the staff, which doesn't happen often, and that it's consistent with the Land Development Code. The planning commission report likewise has no objections at all and finds it consistent with the comprehensive plan. With that, we would ask for council's approval, and I will address any other issues during rebuttal.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions from council? Councilman Suarez.
Thank you. I've got a question. I mean, I understand the whole aspect of it, which is, you're right, there's enough room to make two 75-foot frontage lots on here, but you have the problem of having a national historic building in there. Now, here's the problem that I have. If you're going to split up the way that you have it currently put in there, the accessory structure, which is going to be part of the second lot that's going to be sold, that's part of the historic aspect of the building itself.
Right.
As part of the application from 1989.
Both, yes, yes, sir.
Okay, so...
Both were on the National Register.
Right. So I'm a little confused, because now we're, what are we doing? We're carving out the other part that's going to go with the first lot, not with the second lot that's where the historic building is at?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's the reason she asked the state preservation officer whether or not that would affect the historic nature of it, and they said that it did not.
You know, when I, you know, when I read the letter, I don't think that I got that out of there.
I think...
You know, they were, they were very cursory in their review, it looked like. Now, I may be wrong about that, but it said that, you know...
Upon reviewing the drawings we received from you today, we find the proposed modifications to the lot boundaries and zoning would not impact the lots' listing in the National Register.
Now, how can they say that when, in fact, that's exactly what was in the thing? I understand what the state is saying, okay, but in terms of the National Register, how can you remove a building and still keep the National Register?
It's not being removed. It's still being preserved on the second lot.
Yeah, well, I'm talking to her, though. Thanks. I just, I want to hear what she has to say, so...
Because the structure itself, which is what's historic about it.
Yeah.
Not its attachment to the principal structure, that's, it's not being changed. And it's, it doesn't affect the, it was listed on the National Register because of its architectural significance.
Right.
That's not being changed. So that's why, that's why you have a letter saying it doesn't affect its listing on the National Register.
The question I have is that once it gets rezoned, that other structure won't be, that won't be part of the National Register anymore because it's not part of the same lot, correct?
No, it'll be part of, it'll be still listed on the National Register, absolutely.
So the new, so the new owner could not...
Correct.
Change it or...
Well, this is how...
That's why I'm confused. You see what I'm saying?
Yes, I do. Once a house is listed, once a home is listed on the National Register, it doesn't have local, necessarily local protections. However, what the big however is that you cannot seek to demolish a structure that's on the National Register without triggering a review by the Historic Preservation Commission. And at that review, during that review process, they determine whether or not they want to designate it as a local historic landmark.
Right.
And if they do, then they move forward right then, and they evaluate whether it should be designated as a local historic landmark to give it local protections, and then that would come to you, to city council, to make that final decision.
Meaning the new owner with the new lot.
Right. Correct.
That's what I was trying to get at. I wanted to find out...
Okay.
What protections there are, if any, with a new, a piece of property that was part of the original that's moved over now.
And you know what? It's an important question, and I want to point out, too, that while my client was not obligated to retain and preserve the historic nature of this, because it's not locally designated.
Right.
Nonetheless, she did, and went through a painstaking renovation of this house without changing at all, and I do have pictures, of the exterior as far as its historical significance. In fact, she rebuilt many of the portions of it to make it look almost identical to what was, what was previously... what was, um, what was previously shown on the National Register. And I think, I'm going to find those pictures and I'll, I'll show them to you during rebuttal, but I don't want to hold you up any longer.
Well, and, and, but there was one change because I think Mr. Cohen mentioned about a previous issue with the, with the, with the fencing in the front for the, for that, for the pool. And I remember that, I remember that case also. So that's been changed? Or has it not? I don't know, I can't remember.
Well, there's a fence, there wasn't a fence originally, but there has been a three-foot fence.
Right.
With three-foot ornamental iron in between the columns.
And, and that's, but that's a change, is what I'm asking.
That, that's a change to the lot, yes.
Right, okay. That's what I want to know. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything further from council? Okay. Councilwoman Capina.
The lot has no structure, the lot being proposed to be sold has no structure on it.
That's correct.
Okay, then what do we, okay, it has nothing on it.
Nothing.
Okay, fine.
Other than, it, it has that accessory structure in the rear is the only, is the only.
The accessory structure?
Yes, and this one right here. This one in the rear, right there. So the lot line will, will jog around and go like that. It'll go around the, um.
That's what I saw in the other, okay.
Yeah, that's this one, this, like that. To preserve and meet setbacks for the existing accessory structure. That then will be attached to this home, and a new accessory structure will serve the existing home right here.
Okay. I remember the pool also, and I, I fought very hard for that fence, so.
Well, you had, you have to have a fence around the pool, so. You have to have a fence around the pool.
Yeah, but it was in the front. I remember that.
Oh, Councilwoman Meniskalco.
No, I'm done. Just to clarify, in the packet or in the booklet you, you gave us, she is selling this empty lot in order to use that money to continue the restoration of her home.
And the maintenance of the, of the home.
Which is the historical home that she lives in.
Correct.
That's it?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything further? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Now we go to public comment. Each individual gets three minutes. Now, would everybody who is going to speak this evening line up against the wall, please, just so we can have a, a good idea? Has everyone been sworn in? Has anyone not been sworn in?
They haven't been sworn in.
Okay. Be prepared to be sworn in. Okay, you may proceed, sir.
Good evening, council. My name is Dr. Malcolm Klein. I live on 94 Baltic Circle, which is just around the corner from the project under discussion. My concern is primarily public safety issues around a very complex multi-traffic intersection that's going to be, become much more complex. And if I can just point out, this is East Davis Boulevard, which splits into, this is Davis Boulevard splitting to East Davis Boulevard, West Davis Boulevard, and then Baltic Circle as well. So there's three roads with an intersection there. I live right here, so coming off Baltic Circle, there's a merge lane, and on this merge lane, there's going to be four driveways entering this merge lane. Right now, there's, for this structure, which is here, there's already one driveway, so it's going to add one additional driveway. This property here is the townhouse project, which is going to add two driveways. So today, my presentation was going to be much more visual with video, but unfortunately I didn't get permission out of time, so I apologize. So riding here with my bicycle coming down this way, there's actually no bicycle lane along Davis, Davis Boulevard. There's a bicycle lane starting at about this point here along West Davis Boulevard. So you have traffic coming down West Davis Boulevard, which then gets joined by this merge lane from, from Baltic Circle. So the, but cyclists actually have to compete along this place here for cars coming around this way and for traffic coming around the corner from Baltic Circle, now going to have to compete as well with traffic coming out of four different driveways. So to me, this actually represents quite, quite a significant hazard, not just for cyclists, but actually also pedestrians crossing this intersection. I had a video of a person who was physically disabled and another kid on a skateboard crossing over this intersection, which is actually very tricky because you had to cross over two intersections over here. You get to Central Island there, you're crossing over two, two lanes. There you send the island over there, you're crossing over another two lanes, and then to actually to get to the other side of East Davis Boulevard, you're actually going to cross over four lanes. It was actually an extremely complex intersection, and to me, you know, that adding additional drivers represents quite a significant additional risk to public safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next, please.
Thank you. Ms. G is your name? Ms. G?
Yes.
Thank you. There are one, two, three names. Please acknowledge your presence. Nancy Bolt. Thank you. Stella Cha.
Yeah.
Thank you. And Carol Bonia. Did I say that correctly? Thank you. Three additional minutes, total of six.
Can you say that again? Good? Good evening. I'm Connie G. I live on Adalia on Davis Islands, and I'm here to talk about what hasn't been talked about, and that is why this should be denied. It should be denied because it's already a very congested area and the road design is unsafe. Residents are being denied their safety and their well-being in a very high density. All these black dots are all those apartments and condos and townhouses that are already there. So it's high density. It's high-volume traffic. Station 251 is just south of Arbor. Here's the proposed property. According to the count of October 2018, more than 10,000 vehicles cross that area on a daily basis. Now, we know it's more because our exit vehicles are 21,583, according to the tracking station on the exit bridge, but we're going to work with that 10,000 right now. That occurs right where you have a multi-unit apartment building that has 29 units. How many cars? 30? 40? 60? You have a new condo being built across the street from this property with 12 units. That's 24 cars. You have a new property that is just north of the property, that five, the five units here. Okay, so you have another 10 cars, and as has been said, two more driveways, and what's being proposed is another two more driveways. And if you can see on this page down here, you have not only multi-unit properties, you have multidirectional traffic, you have no safe crosswalks, you have no bike lines, bike lanes. You have a dangerous situation to residents who are trying to walk to the village to support our local economy. But there's a day, I walk this. This is my path. Cars do not stop for you. They're not only a high-volume number of cars, but they're high-speed. The speed is 30 miles per hour. Try 50 on average. So you're adding danger to an already existing dangerous situation. These cars, are they going to pull out from these new units? Are they going to pull out and use the merge lanes? And then they're going to be in this bike lane way down here before they can get over to the West Davis Boulevard? Or are they going to cut across all four lanes, which they're not supposed to because they're designated turning lanes? Are they going to cut across to those lanes that are trying to make a right and left-hand turn? To exhilarate, to exhibit the, um, the danger, Davis Boulevard in the A Streets, these are all the crashes on Davis Boulevard. 197 crashes in four years, nine fatalities. We average almost one per week. In this area, A Streets and Davis Boulevard, that's all, the crashes are all the green dots, 48 crashes on Davis Boulevard in the A section. In this section, we're talking about right here where the property is, where there's West Davis, East Davis, and Davis. In the B Street, 21 crashes on West Davis and those B streets. East Davis, another 13 crashes. We are setting ourselves up for tragedy and bad design, high-volume traffic, high-speeding traffic, bad road design in any which way you look. You can tell by the direction, and this city can be held liable, and I want to point out something. Very recently, New York City paid on a negligence case, the plaintiff was awarded $20 million when the city was held liable for failing to redesign the streets that had a history of already being dangerous. Do we want that for our city? I don't think so. Badly designed streets and adding to it exacerbates the danger already. I don't know how much more I can tell you, except look at the numbers. Look at the numbers. You have too much traffic already on Davis Island. You have too much bad design on Davis Islands, and you're going to add to it by allowing four more driveways on a basic one-lane road? Doesn't make sense to me. I wouldn't want our city to be held liable and have to pay out a lot of taxpayer dollars because of that. The other thing I'd like to remind you, our city government holds no greater responsibility than to provide for the safety and well-being of each and every resident. I have a whole bunch of them from all of your campaign ads. They all talk about get rid of the congestion, make our roads safe, work with the neighborhoods, protect our neighborhoods. Come on, guys. The da, a lot of damage has already been done. Please don't add any more. I'd like to submit this, everything I've, I have and my notes for the record as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Very comprehensive. So you're asking the city to realign the roads in Davis Island so they'll be safer? Because that's what New York got sued for.
I'm asking them to redesign the roads to make it safer for pedestrians and bicyclists and people in the wheelchairs and people with physical. We have two people that live up here that walk right in front of this property, right in this path. You have a very small.
And, and ma'am, and ma'am, you answered Councilwoman Capina's question. Anything further?
It can be done.
Thank you, ma'am.
Cost-effective.
Appreciate it. Next, please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
My, my name is John Cha, and I, I live at 98 Baltic Circle, and I also request that the council deny this application for rezoning. I didn't realize that I was going to, there was going to be a lot of duplication, so I'll try to even cut down my comments even further. It's really one of public and pedestrian safety. As, I also echo the prior comments about trying to cross Davis Boulevard in this location and the addition of, with the addition, continued construction of the multi-unit structure just north of the proposed site. Again, that would introduce three additional driveways, and the geometry of the, um, the road as it splits into two really do not allow for good visualization by either the driver or the pedestrian. And I think that, again, increasing both the, uh, the density as well as the, the ingress and egress of vehicles into this, uh, merge lane is potentially dangerous. The only thing that I would add is that, uh, you know, I've been a trauma surgeon for the, for Tampa General Hospital for the last 10 years, and I've seen a lot of horrific accidents resulting from automobile versus pedestrian. Tampa is already in the top five metropolitan areas in terms of pedestrian deaths resulting from automobiles, and so I fully agree that this area is, is a, not a good one, and perhaps when it's been redesigned to support additional structures and driveways, I'd be in favor of this, but as, uh, in, in terms of professionally and professionally, again, I request that you deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Okay, we have a speaker form here for Ms. Davis. Is there Randy Zamora, Zamorin? Thank you, sir. And Wayne Pickard? Thank you. I think the other two were marked out. Is that correct, ma'am?
Yes, they left.
Okay. Two, two additional minutes for five total.
Good evening. My name is Janice Davis, and I am the president of the Davis Island Civic Association and a 23-year resident of Davis Islands. Many of the residents present at tonight's meeting attended DECA's March meeting, asking for our support opposing the 100 West Davis rezoning. DECA's consistent position on these issues is not to oppose development, but to hold firm in asking city departments and the council to follow the code. As a result of the opposition from our residents, which I must mention, prior to any of the social media, they all showed up, I submitted a letter to the council and wished to read it for record as follows. Dear council members, the Davis Island Civic Association discussed RES 1901 at its March 5, 2019 board meeting. The discussion included statistical information about traffic matters on West Davis Boulevard and inconsistencies with the proposed site plan and the City of Tampa code. Subsequent to the meeting, a vote was taken authorizing the president to provide written opposition to RES 1901. The DECA board members voted to oppose a rezoning from RS 75 to PD. The PD, if approved, will, one, allow for two lots, one of which will be non-conforming; two, create potential traffic safety hazards; three, be inconsistent with the lot requirements for an RS 75 zoning district; and four, result in improvements that are inconsistent with the code. The DECA board continues to assert that new development should be consistent with the requirements outlined within the code. We believe that continual deviations from the code will adversely impact the character of the islands and, in this instance, potentially create dangerous situations for our community and visitors. Thank you in advance for allowing the Davis Island Civic Association the opportunity to provide these comments. I would like to have this letter for the record, but I'd also additionally like to underscore the following points. DECA is not here to the vo, here to be the voice of no on every request. PD and variances are necessary and appropriate when warranted. As we have stated repeatedly, Davis Island is under tremendous pressure for increased densification driven by developers trying to make escalating land prices work by cramming too much house on too little land. DECA is here to work to protect the character of our special community, the safety of our residents, and the rights neighbors withstanding, most affected by this request. We believe this request, in short, is an overreach using the PD as a vehicle to work around the code resulting in, once again, a request to put too much density on the land. We believe the application to be flawed and incomplete from the failure of the applicant to list all waivers clearly and upfront, to the many inconsistencies in the site plans and elevations supporting the request. We believe staff's conclusion of consistency of the request with code to be an error. We need your support to protect the character of our island and the safety and the rights of our residents. Therefore, we ask that you deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Ms. Felita has a speaker waiver form with what I see are two names. Please acknowledge your names. Stan Maxwell. Thank you. And Stephen, I can not make it out. Thank you. Two additional minutes, total of five.
My name is Joanne Felita. I live at 103 Bermuda Avenue, which is directly on the west side or the backside of 100 West Davis, as well as 96 and 98. as well as 96 and 98 West Davis. I'm within 250 feet of the West Davis House and have lived in our home since 1989. I was the past president of Davis Island Civic Association and was a co-chair of the creation of the Davis Island Park, which is directly across the street from this, which is shown on staff records as multifamily, highlighted in yellow. But it is a park. And also of the Davis Islands Business District Improvements Project. Obviously, having not only a four-story townhouse building on 96 to 98 West Davis, which has already been zoned, which was already zoned RN 24 and was recently permitted, and now the possibility of two additional buildings at 25 to 40 feet in height added to 100 West Davis dramatically changes everything we've loved about our home in Davis Islands. It doesn't quite seem fair, considering we live in our home. Our home is homesteaded, and the owner of 100 West Davis is not homesteaded and lives on Harbor Island while leasing out the home and garage apartment dwelling, sometimes separately, for long- and short-term rentals as a travel resort and for events and parties. I'm very concerned that the site may, in the future, become additional buildings to increase the size of the resort and rental property or travel resort. The owners will seek to rezon to multifamily is what I'm concerned about. I'm asking you to deny the application for rezoning REZ 1901 at 100 West Davis from RS 75 to PD or any lot smaller than the current zoning district of RS 75 would allow. Today, approximately 74%, including the subject lot of the homes within this zoning district RS 75 and within 1,320-foot radius of the lot are on lots greater than or equal to 75-foot width and 7,500 square feet. Therefore, this rezoning would not be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. It violates all three of the following plans. And as a resident of this neighborhood, I encourage the council to follow the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan Policy 9.3.8. Tampa zoning atlas designated in this area is RS 75 and City Code Section 27-11, which states newly-created lots must maintain the front orientation and the historical precedent pattern of parcel configurations in the neighborhood. Lots of record may not be reconfigured in conflict with the established pattern of the lots within the radius of 1,320 feet. I want to ensure that the council takes into account the impact that rezoning smaller than RS 75 would allow, lot splitting will have on the residents who bought homes and moved here with reasonable expectation that the city council would enforce the RS 75 zoning district with a minimum 75-foot width and a minimum 7,500-square-foot lot area that has been in effect in the area for death rates. The smaller newly-created lot would not meet... Would meet neither width nor area requirements of RS 75, and a larger lot will not meet RS 75 setback requirements. To ensure Tampa and Davis Islands continue to be the community and the neighborhood its citizens are proud to call home and protect our property values, please deny the rezoning application for 100 West Davis Boulevard. Please deny this rezoning. Follow our codes. I would like to enter into the record and attach documents. 100 West Davis short-term rental information that was pulled off the Internet today. Petitions to oppose the rezoning of the West Davis. Thirty individuals with a 250-foot zone of 42 notices sent. Petitions to oppose the rezoning of 100 West Davis of 42 individuals that are in the 251-foot-plus area. And a report on all parcels in the zoning district RS 75 that are in a 1320-foot radius of 100 West Davis Boulevard. 74% of 128 homes are greater than or equal to 75 feet and a minimum of 7,500 square feet. The city staff, in their recommendation, did the surrounding block, not the 1,320-foot radius of the site. So this is a package that I'd like to enter for the record.
Hello. My name is Don Felita. I live at 103 Bermuda Avenue, Bermuda Avenue correctly behind 100 West Davis. My wife and I have lived there for 30 years. My family, my mother and father, built the house in 1939. I've lived on Davis Islands for 60 years. And I've seen a lot of changes, especially an increase in density and traffic. Now, most nights, I sit out on my deck. I have a cigar and a cocktail. It's usually relatively peaceful. But every once in a while, there's a screech of brakes and horns tooting. Now, that used to happen maybe once or twice a month or maybe every two months years ago. Now, just about every week, somebody's slamming on brakes and blowing their horn. There's definitely an increase in traffic. Recently, Davis Island was named the fifth-best neighborhood in America. While nearby Hyde Park was 20 and Harbor Island number 21. According to Google, there's about 150,000 neighborhoods in the U.S. Davis Island's number five. Someday, my daughter and grandson may take over my house. And hopefully, Davis Islands will still rank as one of the best neighborhoods. Approving this rezoning will adversely impact safety and impact all of us neighbors of this site. Please deny the rezoning application for 100 West Davis Boulevard. This uncontrollable growth must stop somewhere sometime. Let it be now. Please stand up for Davis Islands and deny this rezoning and follow our code. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Maurice Bonilla. My home is 109 Bermuda, which is behind this property. The most important duty of leaders of a community are to keep its citizens safe. When we first purchased our home at 109 Bermuda, we took our eldest son to see the house. He was visiting from New York City, so congestion, traffic, and pedestrians were not a big deal. When my wife attempted to pull out from Bermuda onto Davis Boulevard, our son shouted, "Mom, you can't pull out here. Turn around and go the other way." Then he made us promise him that we would never use that intersection to leave the house. If my son could see that the corner was unsafe after visiting just once, we need to think really hard about adding more cars to the already treacherous intersection. Crossing that corner either by foot, bicycle, or car is simply unsafe. The addition of more dwellings currently being built or planning to be built will add multiple cars to a daily... On a daily basis to the already congested thoroughfare. I'm not opposed to growth of our city, and I encourage it. However, increasing the traffic at an already difficult intersection is asking for trouble. Other areas of our city have had to modify their traffic patterns. On Bay Shore, speed limits have been lowered, crosswalk lights have been installed, and lanes narrowed from three to two. This is in order to make it safer for all. Unfortunately, a big part of those changes were due to fatalities on the road. I would not want... I would not like our Davis Islands community to have to make similar changes in the future for the same reasons. Having increased traffic flow at that intersection is asking for trouble and can be avoided by smart and forward-looking city planning. We bought our home on Davis... Okay. We bought our home on Davis Islands hoping that it would be a safe community. I think with this added traffic, it would not be safe. And I am against it. As an aside beyond this, I would just like to say that I find it, in a venue like this, inappropriate to personally attack people via social media.
Hi, good evening. My name's Elizabeth Carr. And my husband and I bought a 1941's home at 104 Bermuda Avenue on Davis Island in 1996 and raised our three children there. So I am a participating neighbor within 250 feet of this property. We have respected and maintained this 78-year-old home for our benefit, but also out of the respect for our neighbors. Our home is on a corner lot. And for privacy, we installed and maintain a living hedge out of respect for our neighbors. In preparing to speak to the council, I read relevant parts of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan adopted by City Council January 7, 2016. If a rezoning request like the one before counseled today is approved, we can all be certain that Imagine 2040 will fall short of reality. The Imagine Plan describes life on Davis Island as it would become in 2014 if the objectives and policies enclosed in the plan come to be. In imagining Davis Island life in 2014, there were several points. So I'm going to discuss a few of those. One was that the island's unique history and heritage will be embraced by residents and historic structures and design elements are protected voluntarily. I'd like to move that 2014 projection forward to today and say that I stand here to voluntarily protect a historic structure by stating that the home on this parcel is listed on the National Register of Historic Places, which means that it is deemed worthy of preservation for its historical significance. The proposal to carve a section of the lot, build a 40-foot home right against a one-story structure, and build a new garage and driveway for the historic structure on the opposite side of the grand entrance will lower its attractiveness and value and place it at risk for future demolition. I also stand to voluntarily protect the unique history and heritage of Davis Island in that it is a neighborhood that is safe without traffic lights. Increasing traffic through development decisions will eventually require traffic lights on Davis Island to control traffic and thereby the loss of this unique characteristic. Another point stated, in 2014, islanders enjoy their traditions and celebrations, and they strengthen their sense of community through participation. My attempt to participate is thwarted by the lack of detail or of details to be addressed later in this application for rezoning. In addition, I would like to state that the owner does not live in the property, but rents it on short-term basis and has installed a four-foot fence and, most importantly, by this application to rezon their property for the sole purpose of financial gain to the detriment of the historic resident and the surrounding neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Next, please.
Hello. Greg Rodea. I live at 105 Bermuda, directly behind the property. I oppose this two primary reasons. One, safety, as it's been pointed out over and over. The amount of traffic on Davis Island, on West Davis Boulevard, East Davis Boulevard... I walk my dogs every single day, several times a day. And I choose the time I walk my dogs around the block and take the West Davis route because I'm fearful. There's that much traffic. When I'm on that road in the morning and I think to myself, where are all these people going? This is a small island. There are so many people. They're all going fast. I'm in construction. I'm in the trades. I realize a lot of them are coming to work on the island, but there aren't that many people working because the island's not that big. The next biggest concern I have with all of that is the fact that all of these homes, including the townhomes, but all these new driveways, everyone is going to be required to exit and head south on West Davis Boulevard. But if they're going somewhere, they're going to need to be going north. So they have several options. They can either take a left on Danube and cross oncoming traffic of West Davis, or they can take a right and circle around on Bermuda Avenue and try to exit at Baltic. Exiting on Baltic is definitely life-challenging. You've got to have big ones to take that turn there. I'm concerned about the traffic that's going to reroute itself through Bermuda Avenue. And the reasons I'm concerned about that? If you go down the block, we've got a family of children. We've got Lial. We've got Gunner. We've got Lucas. We've got Elin. We've got Lily. We've got Lena. You've got Miller. You've got Gabrielle. You've got Chase. You've got all those children. And in today's media world, those children are out there every single day playing. They're running up and down the block. They're on skateboards. They're on scooters. It's just... It's a bad situation, and the safety is a primary concern. The other concern that's been expressed is with the fact that it is used as an entertainment venue. I live directly behind it. I like to sit on my patio and smoke a cigar. The auxiliary structure is two-story, and it's all glass facing my patio. So I don't have privacy when that's being used as a venue. I'm concerned about what ultimately will happen with that structure in the future as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next, please.
Good evening, council members. My name is Linda Saul Senna, and I live at 157 Biscayne on Davis Islands, about three blocks away. In my youth, I wrote the Davis Islands Plan for the Planning Commission. I was a young planner and did some research. In 1927, Davis Islands won the American Planning Association Award for the Best Planned Community. It is unbelievably thoughtfully put together. You've got the commercial area. You've got the offices. You've got multifamily, and you've got single-family. This is the single-family area. Now, the more expensive single-family homes face west. This is on the west side. The development pattern in this area is that an individual would buy several lots and create a home and a garden. Very frequently, there was an outbuilding, which was a garage, and often relatives or staff lived on the second level of that. And that was the original plan of this. There are many... Not tons, but there are at least two dozen examples of these original homes that are still intact. The proposal before you today violates the historic pattern of the area. The bifurcation of this lot into a jog is really not consistent with the historic pattern, and it's really inappropriate. And it does a disservice to the rhythm of this portion of the island. On another note... And so, speaking as somebody who knew the plan and watched the rezonings, and this was set aside as an RS 75 area. And what's for you today would change that plan that's, you know, part of the comp plan, and it's been adopted. Lastly, I have a friend who had a son who had a bachelor party by inviting seven classmates and renting this property. The premise that the person who owns the property lives there full-time is not valid based on my friend's son's bachelor party experience. Thank you for your consideration, and I hope that you'll continue to respect the traditional pattern of development on Davis Islands.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Bolt has five names. Please acknowledge your presence, please. Kathleen Farzenega? Did I say that correctly? Thank you. Zelda Musa?
Yeah.
Mary Jo Faraza? Thank you. Brian Roney? Thank you. Vanessa Edwards? Thank you. Five additional minutes for a total of eight.
I just want to start out by thanking this council for testing the limits of stamina. Really, thank you. This has been a tough one, even though we don't... I don't come here very often, and I know that. About a year... About a week ago, a bomb went off.
And your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Bob Bolt, 213 Blanca, 43-year resident of Davis Island. Every day, mostly twice a day, Every day, mostly twice a day, I drive through the intersection that you've seen and heard people talk about. I could drive this thing in my sleep. I mean, I know this traffic situation, and I don't know that I need to elaborate on that, given the quality of the presentation to date. A week ago, a bomb went off in the form of the staff report. I can only tell you that I, you know I'm not a land use zoning guy, but everything I know about this subject, I've learned since that report was issued. And the bomb went off because of the finding of consistency on all these issues that are embedded in the PD application, okay? So just bear with me, I don't know much, everything I know about this subject, I've learned in the last week. But here's what I know. This application was filed on October 5, 18, so it's been a little in process, a little more than five months, which you witnessed tonight, I've kind of gotten a sense of. This is a moving target. They're filing amendments and stuff like that, and Ms. Grimes' excellent attorney was hired about a month ago, and it's been moving ever since, and I'm telling you, it's been extremely difficult for a layman to get his arms around just exactly what we're dealing with. But I can tell you that the staff report was a shocker to all of us, and we have rallied as fast as we can to present to you tonight, basically on one week's or less work. It took a couple of days to absorb the shock. Okay, the next thing I looked, I found was this. Are there any waivers or variances associated with this application? No, okay? So go forward from there. We were told publicly, and all notices subsequent to this have been issued accordingly. No variances. But if you read the staff report and you listen carefully, there are variances. There's actually a variance mentioned in the staff report, there was another one mentioned tonight, but the important part is this. When you read that staff report, I counted 12 mentions of variances in the staff report. This is an application that has no request for variances. It's riddled with references to staff report. What is going on here? So as I learned my way through this process, I learned that if you file a PD application, you can, to some degree, you can get around some of the various requirements, the stricter various requirements, under the rationalization of the harmonization of the property and all those good concepts that are, let you know so well, and I don't. But the point is, the PD, I think in this instance, as a layman, is being abused because there are all these implicit variances in there, and you're going to hear something about that. But you've got lot size, lot dimensions, traffic, all these things that they're asking for, and what I heard the staff say earlier, and I might have misconstrued this, but what I heard is, "PD, no request for variance, shutdown of analysis." In other words, if there's no official request for variances, it gets a different tact in the eyes of the staff. And I would submit that substance over form should govern this. If you read into this application, if you read the staff report, you know, it talks way too much about variances when none are requested. Okay, the other thing I've noticed is that when you read the staff report, you can visualize yourself looking out in the neighborhood, and basically, you're looking north where the mirasol is, you're looking across the street where the multi, and then you look down toward the village, and that's one view. But I want this council to turn around, like a Google map thing, turn around and look down the other way, and I want you to visualize an RS-75 domino there, that's this property, and look behind it, because as far as the eye can see, you're going to see RS-75 dominos all the way down the full length of West Davis. And then you're going to take a left, and you're going to go the full length of South Davis, and then you're going to take another left and come up to the village, RS-75. What happens if you push that first domino over? Okay, the character of the neighborhood is going to be changed. Now, we all read the papers, we know what's going on on Davis Island. This notion that you can make money by subdividing a lot, frankly, I'm not sure that makes any sense these days. It might have made sense 10, 20 years ago. These days, the kind of buyers that are moving on the Davis Island want big lots. Look at the homes that are being built, you know? The tendency is to want the big lot. I question whether this application makes any sense, even for the owner. Okay, so basically, our position is that this whole thing has come to pass way too fast. There hasn't been adequate disclosure regarding the real nature of the application, requesting variances and so forth. It's been dropped on us seven days ago. It really wasn't until then we knew the staff was going to go this direction, and we have been doing our best to put together a good opposition. Thank you for, and I want to say this, I personally love history, okay? And I can tell you that DP Davis jumped off that ship on October 20, 1926, okay? And if we brought him up, if Neptune offered him up, and he came before this council tonight, and he would tell you, "Please, don't do this to my neighborhood." He comes back from Coral Gables, he designs this magnificent structure that you heard Ms. Saul-Senna described, and it's big streets, it's big lots, and this particular property is a nice property. It's got a nice side yard, it's all coordinated. To cut that property in half, reduce the size of the lot, would utter destroy his vision, not only of that property, but of the whole neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Any of you have any grandchildren?
Okay, let's go with the, they've already gotten.
They all collated?
Yes, they're separate.
So each one gets handed out separately?
No, each person gets one, each of the three.
Good evening. Debbie Zammerman, 192 Corsica Street, Davis Island resident, DECA board member, and David, Davis Island stewardship committee member. I have been sworn. I know this site well, and I access the adjacent sidewalk and/or roadway most days and often several times in one day. On multiple occasions, cars exiting the property have not seen me or others with me, including my grandchildren. My husband rides bikes in the bike lane adjacent to the property countless times each week. Safety of the sidewalk, bike lane, and roadway are important to me, and I am extremely concerned that this PD could compromise the safety of my family, friends, and other residents and visitors to the island. The Tampa Comprehensive Plan, per LU policy 8.13.3 states, "Planning development rezoning process is not to be used for the sole purpose of waiving the established land development regulations. I am here to ask that the PD decisions within our community follow our code." I have submitted correspondence into the record addressing transportation and pedestrian safety concerns, PD waiver site plan discrepancies, project narrative deficiencies, staff report discrepancies, and transportation technical standards issues. I gave those to Mr. Shelby, and they are in the record. Site plan deficiencies. You have a marked-up site plan, and it's on the overhead as well, and on this big board, a marked-up site plan and matrix legend, which looks more like this, sorry. And matrix legend, which reflects potential deficiencies as reflected within the site plan board. The applicant has failed to provide site plan information required per the code and application requirements. Since PDs are tied to the site plan, no approval should be granted until these issues have been addressed by staff. Findings must be shared with the public in a manner that allows an opportunity to review and comment on the required site pan, plan. Tampa Comprehensive Plan inconsistencies. This request is inconsistent with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. I have provided you with a sampling of comp plan requirements that are applicable to this request. Many of them have been cited many times tonight on other issues. In closing, this PD request is essentially a workaround, excuse me, this PD request is essentially an overreach of the PD process, which disguises the true intent of the request, which is to provide, number one, the creation of an irregularly shaped lot inconsistent with the established development patterns within the neighborhood; two, allow for a lot with dimensional characteristics less than required within the code; and three, allow for a structure to be built in conflict with the code and numerous deficiencies as enumerated within the marked-up site plan. Please follow our code, overturn this decision, and require that the applicant develop their site in conformity with the codes. As LU policy 8.13.3 says, "Planning development rezoning process is not to be used for the sole purpose of waiving the established land development regulations." Thank you for your consideration, and in the record, I have submitted the marked-up site plan, site plan legend.
Thank you, ma'am.
Tampa Comprehensive Plan and correspondence.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Next, sir. And after this gentleman, ma'am, are you going to be speaking? Okay, so good. Okay, thank you, sir.
My name is Greg Mazzolo. My wife and I and my five children live at 52 Ladoga. We'd like to first thank you for your service to our city. We love Tampa, and we love Davis Island. As the requister has admitted, the request is all about the body, so let's talk about money. I have put together a map of the hottest and most rich real estate in Tampa, and clearly, and I can scroll, you have a copy of this in front of you, I can scroll all the way north and all the way south, and as you can see, Davis Island is one of the two hottest, richest, and most in-demand pieces of real estate. So if you want to talk about the money, which this is all about, and it really isn't about the use of the money, it's just about the money. What you have is developers licking their chops, and my concern is, is that, I share all the other concerns, but I also share a concern that this isn't about just one decision. This is about the fact that one precedent can open the door to many more, which can accumulate and become law. So let's talk about what am I saying? What I'm saying here is, if you see the number one, the number one is the parcel in question. If you agree to let them build, let them parcel off what would now be considered a non-conforming lot and build what would now be considered a non-conforming structure, all of the properties, which is two, blocked in the above on that map, is all of the residences to Danube. They're all teardowns. You can go look at them. They are all teardown structures. So if I'm a developer, and I know this about the money, I even understand they're admitting it's about the money, there's going to be a money chase for all of those lots to be rezoned or let other things happen on them, because you could open up the door to that. Then what happens? I made a map, I'm not Rand or McNally, but I made a map to the best of my ability of how many teardowns are on Davis Island. Just judging by the eye, you know, I don't know, but there are a lot of homes on Davis Island that are 50 or 60 years old, they're single-story units, and many of them look to be in disrepair, et cetera. There are over 600 teardowns on Davis Island, and so my concern is, is that this isn't one decision, this could be a decision that changes the absolute face and landscape of Davis Island. And finally, I share with you what was called the Imagine 2040, the Tampa Comprehensive Plan, and in it, it just talks about protecting low-density, single-family areas, it talks about maintaining the character of single-family residential areas, discouraging demolition, which you'd be encouraging demolition.
Thank you, sir. I'll give you 15 seconds to finish.
That's fine. And then finally, under 5.3, it talks about allowing development that is generally consistent with the levels of infrastructure development, and if you've ever tried to get on or off this island as the density continues to grow, it's becoming increasingly difficult in the mornings and in the evenings. So I oppose to this, and I ask you to deny the request. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, sir. Okay, now we will move to, I believe there's no one else here for, anybody else, public comment?
Yes. I thought the line was just speaking against, the line was just speaking for.
Oh, the line is for anybody who would like to speak, yea or nay, and you may speak, sir, if you'd like. Is, just to clarify, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, go ahead, sir.
Yes, my name is Perry Sullivan, and I had to come speak, there was a lot resting on me as an outsider looking in. Sometimes you're too close to a project, but, ma'am, what do you do for a living? Ma'am? Yeah, but it's relevant, what I'm asking her. The reason I'm asking her is, the trips are generated for down the street and around the corner, but no trip generated from the house. If she's working in the house, she's not going to be going in and out, in and out, and if she does, it'd be at a time when it won't be crowded, because I work for myself, and I don't go out when it's crowded on the street. If she didn't work for the house, then it means she'll leave 8:00 in the morning, she'll come back at 5:00. I don't see how all of this is causing this trouble for safety and the entire neighborhood because she has a driveway in and on the street. It's not her, it's not her fault because this poor design, Davis Island. She had absolutely nothing to do with that. Okay, so I don't understand that point. It's a single-family residence, there's not going to be a lot of traffic going in and out, and it won't be causing any kind of safety issues, I can see. She's a owner of the house, she has a vested interest, and she is not like a house flipper, okay? She's spending, she's spending all this money to rehab her house to meet the historical, which she didn't have to do. I graduated '79, an architect, and I've been in construction all my life, and that's a lot of extra money you have to spend that you don't have to, to do that. So she has some vested interest, she loves what she's doing. She loves the neighborhood, and she loves the house she's in, and she just wants to make it better. There is, you know, everybody doesn't have a money tree in the backyard. You can't go in the backyard and do all this work. So she's trying to do what she has, she's using her resources to do what she needs to do to fix the house, okay? The rerouting of the traffic, you know, you got a house, one extra house is backing on driveway, I don't see how that will cause you to have to reroute the entire neighborhood because of what she's doing, all right? And all these things about you sitting in the backyard with a cigar, what does they have to do with this lady building a house and backing and going down on a merry way, okay? I don't, I don't understand relevance of this. My mind is not, I guess, advanced as the people here. I have a very simple way of looking at things, I have a very logical way of looking at things, and I just had to speak on it.
Thank you very much, sir. Now rebuttal by the petitioner.
Somebody left their glasses. For the record, Gina Grimes. And before I begin, I want to pass out some photos. There's one package, that's the photos of the house before it was renovated, pre-renovation and post-renovation, and I want to show them both to you. As far as rebuttal, you heard a lot of concerns about roadway safety, that there's a dangerous situation in the area, that there aren't adequate crosswalks, that there's already a lot of traffic, that there's poor roadway designs. As the last speaker just said, unfortunately for the residents out there, that is not something that has been caused by this project. Those are already existing conditions. So what can we do to address that with this project? Well, the issue with the driveway, we said we would be willing to add that hammerhead design in order to make sure that anybody that would pull out on the site would be able to turn around internally and then pull out straight as opposed to backing off. But beyond that, there's really not any more we can do as far as the existing conditions. I will also note that a lot of people complained about the traffic on West Davis, but as Ms. Saul-Senna pointed out, this is a perfectly planned community, and all the commercial traffic goes on East Davis. So the only people going down West Davis that are speeding and causing accidents are the residents that live out on the islands to the west.
Who's exiting?
The other point that I really think is important, and it's not intended to be meant as this is what we're going to do if this rezoning is not approved, but I want everybody to keep in mind that this lot meets the requirements to have two separate lots that comply with the RS-75. It could be developed without going through the rezoning process, but as we've shown you, we don't want to do that. You can see from the photos what lengths that my client went to to try to renovate this structure, and it's a beautiful home, and it certainly isn't something that she's going to rent out for bachelor, bachelor parties. gonna rent out for bachelor parties. She has rented it out in the past, she will, she will be glad to testify to that under oath. She does not own any other homes in the city, so it's not accurate that she has a home on Davis Island that she, or on Harbor Island that she stays in. This is her only home, and she's lived there for the past eight years with her son. The Davis Island Civic Association brought up the point that it doesn't comply with code. In fact, it does pursuant to the staff report. They believe it's too much density, but keep in mind, the density that's permitted on the site is six dwelling units per acre, and we're proposing half of that, so certainly it can't be too much density. As far as the changes that were made, the waivers that weren't listed, as I mentioned, we didn't list any waivers because we didn't want to ask for any waivers. We understood that we could put the separation between the accessory structure and the principal structure as we do all the other setbacks as something that we'd have to adhere to per the site plan. Didn't know that it was required to be a waiver. But if they haven't had adequate time to address it because of this change and this added waiver, then certainly between first and second reading, they have the opportunity, more than an ample opportunity to evaluate it and to address it at the second public hearing on second reading. They certainly would have enough time between now and then to address it. But in the end, what it amounts to is the legal standard for this application. Whenever it goes up for review, there's three things the court looks at, procedural due process, the only procedural issue raised was the one I just mentioned, that has to do with adequate time to prepare and respond. Between now and second reading, they will have adequate time to do so. The second standard the court's gonna look at is whether or not you followed the essential requirements of law. The staff has given you in their staff report the requirements for 27-136, the requirements for a PD, and has said that we've complied with all of those requirements. And last but not least, is competent and substantial evidence to support whatever decision you make. The staff report alone, by law, constitutes competent and substantial evidence. The evidence and testimony that I've presented to you related to the comp plan, related to the zoning, related to the existing development, related, most importantly, to the historic preservation issue which is driving this whole case and the request for the rezoning, all of that also relates to the code criteria and the rationale for this, and we believe is substantial and competent evidence. But I can tell you one thing that's not substantial and competent evidence, and that's fear and conjecture and rumors. And we heard a lot of concern about traffic safety, but nothing related or specifically caused by this site, and that is not competent and substantial evidence. And with that, we would ask, because it does comply with code and because the staff supports it, that you would approve this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from counsel? Yes, sir, Mr. Maniscalco.
Real quick, the, this empty lot and the one that's just next door to it, was there a mid-century design home that was demolished within the last few years, it was very large? Okay. He said yeah.
The lot, not, not our lot, not part of our lot.
Well, next to it, there was, right there on the corner, it was a...
And that's what I think people are most fearful about, is this is right now being advertised as a townhouse project. By the way, the townhomes are going for $1.5 million each.
And if I remember...
And that's what I think they're concerned about.
The house that was there had a driveway with maybe two or three-car garage facing West Davis, if I remember the design.
I'm not sure what was there. Here is a picture, the overhead that was, it's from Google Earth, where you can see where, when the structure was there. And it looks like out here, maybe, that there was like an open curve almost.
Yeah, there were cars parked there that I remember. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else from counsel? Counselor Mccapin?
Yeah, this has nothing to do with it, but I remembered when I mentioned the fence, and it came back, it was an RV...
The DRB?
Various review board. And it was because it was in the front, it was not allowed more than three feet. So then the iron fence was added. I do remember that, what that happened, but it has nothing to do, nor is it gonna influence my decision. However, I am gonna say this, there was a lot of talk about traffic. I also heard, we don't want red light, we don't want lights in our, in our, in our district, in our, because it'll ruin Davis Island. Do you not think those accidents are gonna ruin Davis Island and the, and the traffic? That's coming from the residents. They may be coming off the bridge to, to work, but they work at Tampa General, they work at the north end of the, of the island. So when you talk about this, it's something that, you know, the Davis Island Home and Association, the Davis Island Civic Association should be looking at very seriously as to the residents, the traffic, the speed that happens there. And I agree that this, this request, whether it's granted or not tonight, has, will, in my opinion, not impact that at all. What impacts it is the residents driving down West Davis at speeds that they should not be driving. No, that's it for me.
Okay. May I have a motion to close? Motion by Councilwoman Maniscalco, a second by Councilwoman Miranda, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, I will say this again, as I have a few times tonight, what is the pleasure of counsel?
I'll read it.
Counselor, go ahead.
Okay. This is REZ 1901. An ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 100 West Davis Boulevard in the City of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in Section 1 from zoning district classifications, RS-75 residential single-family to PD plan development residential single-family detached, providing an effective date. Seriously. Okay, that's it.
Motion dies?
I don't think it did, we haven't voted.
Oh, okay. There wasn't a second, for lack of a second.
I'll second it for discussion if you want to go.
Okay.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Mccapin, a second by Councilwoman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
The motion fails?
Motion failed with Mccapin and Suarez voting yes.
No, Miranda.
I'm sorry. With Mccapin and Miranda voting yes.
Any further motions?
Before we, before we have a countermande motion, one of the issues that I have about this, more than anything else, is that because of the uniqueness of the building itself, I have a problem with the design and how they're going to, and how they're going to promote and change it. I, you know, the historical nature of the home makes it a little bit different for me as opposed to any other kind of change in land use. But in addition, if I recall correctly, when we did the fencing, there was some discussion about safety for the children that were at the pool. Now, that doesn't mean that there's an overarching problem with more, you know, traffic, it's just as much traffic as before, but, you know, I remember that was a discussion that was made by the applicant the first time. The way I look at this is that it does change the character of the neighborhood because the uniqueness of the lot itself is different than almost anything else that's out there. And the way that the platid facing of it changes kind of the nature of everything else that's in there. So for that purpose, I'll make a motion. I make, oh, no, I was just making, okay, yeah.
And we'll, we'll discuss.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll discuss it.
I mean, if you'd rather discuss it than if somebody else wants to make a motion, but I'll, I'll make a motion if that's, you know...
We can make a motion and then discuss, I would think.
Doesn't matter either way. Doesn't matter either way. I mean, for me, the, you know, the motion deals more with the, with what the development pattern and the character and compatibility, and that's under 27-136, under Sub 6, promote and encourage development where appropriate in location, character, and compatibility with the surrounding impacted neighborhood and build environment and existing geography. I don't think it meets those standards based on the very uniqueness of the, the building and the plot itself. You know, that's what makes it unique to me, and why I don't agree with having to change the development pattern as reflected in what we see currently on the isle, on that particular part of the island, put it that way. Because so many of the other lots around it are 75-foot frontage, and, and then, of course, with the uniqueness of the property itself, meaning the building itself, I just had, I can't see that, that change making it fit into the rest of the, the rest of the development pattern. So that's, that would be my motion, is based on that.
Second.
And counsel?
The pattern, there's five townhouses going up right next to it.
No.
Right next to it, so the pattern is there. And that's not, that's being done as we speak. So I don't understand the logic at all. When I look at this and I see there's five townhouses next, next to it. So it is, it has, it already has changed, it already is there. So I don't understand the, the disturbance to the residents, you know, as far as the, the look or the, the design.
If I could, Ms. Mccapin, it's singularly unique. It's not, it's not only that, if you look at the way the development pattern is on one side of Davis Boulevard versus the other side. My point is, is that it, the house itself, the property itself, is unique in that nature. That's my feeling about it, based on what I've been able to read on it. And I, you know, obviously, we can have disagreement about it, but...
I'm gonna go ahead. Legal.
Oh, do we have to open the, do we have to open the hearing again?
To ask a question about the...
I don't know, do we have to open again?
I think we do have to.
It's a question that's gonna require an opinion, I would suggest you do open it.
Okay, do we? Okay, we have a motion open by Councilwoman Miranda, a second by Councilwoman Maniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm gonna ask you, the uniqueness, where does that fall on the, on our reasoning to deny?
Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department, I'm not sure that I'm seeing the section that, I know you referenced a section.
If I could, Ms. Mccapin, now tell her exactly what it is.
Thank you, I know you referenced one.
27-136, Sub 6.
Okay.
Okay, if you want me to read it to you, I will.
No, I see it.
Okay.
I just wasn't finding it. Thank you, that was helpful. The uniqueness of the particular lot in the, this is not locally historic, and so it does not have local historic designation protection. And so, not that that was everything that was the base, that was everything of the basis of the motion, but I do want to clarify for the record that that in itself is, is not a basis for it. Section 6 talks about promoting and encouraging development where appropriate in location, character, and compatibility with the surrounding impacted neighborhood. And I think that that's what it's talking about. Now, certainly, you know, you all are the ones who apply the facts to the law, but that section is talking about, is the particular property compatible with the surrounding area? I hope I answered your question.
Okay, it's not compatible, compatible right now, because you have small houses right behind it that were built in the 40s and the 50s. It is not compatible right now. Maybe historic, but it's not compatible. So, that's my answer.
Okay, thank you. Do we need another motion to close, I would assume?
I'll move to close.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Miranda, a second by Councilwoman Maniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, I believe, is Councilwoman Cohen, unless, Councilwoman Mccapin, you're finished?
Well...
Well, I won't ask anymore, which is from the...
Did we just close, did we just close our discussion, or did we...
No, we closed the hearing to be able to take testimony.
It's outside testimony.
Section 27-136, subsection 8, promote architectural features and elements which complement the surrounding community and enhance the overall quality of the development and elevations provided or of a residential style that is complementary to the surrounding area. I think the, the comment that I heard from Councilwoman Suarez, and I'm not trying to put words into your mouth, was that this is just a little too cute by half, trying to carve out this odd-shaped lot with this, this sort of house thrown in there, dividing the two historic structures from one another on the same property. And I understood the petitioner's argument about being able to divide it as of right, but you really can't divide it as of right because of the way that, that the, the structures actually sit on the property. So you're forced to do this pretty convoluted dividing of the lot, which to me is incompatible and inconsistent with the overall development pattern.
Thank you, sir. And counsel? Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
She actually showed that you can divide it. You have to go to, it comes up to the side of the house.
But you can't. That, I guess, that, my point is, you really can't divide it without chopping the house off.
Right, right. I had a house like that, I know what that's talking about. Exactly.
Counselor Miranda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've heard many things, and for a group of good neighbors who come here for a long period, long day-to-day, it's applaudable that they think and they feel what they're saying is correct, and I understand that very much. However, when you look at land zoning, it's about the property under the house, not the property on top of the house. In other words, the ceiling is one thing, no higher than 35 feet, and then you have the land in which the house sits under. The property owner, in this case, and I'm not a judge and I'm not a lawyer, is, and I mentioned, I heard some different things about an appellate court, this, that, the other, which is fine, I understand that. And, and then on zoning matters, you only look at the land. This is not property being divided, the property that's already owned by one single property owner. It's a property that meets the qualification, whether it's rectangular, square, or zigzagged, it meets the qualification of the building. So they own both sides. Whoever buys that property and builds a house, I would assume knows that the land is not squared, it's not rectangular, and now you gotta be blind. And I just feel that buyer beware, if that's what you want to buy, and you're gonna build the house, I would imagine accordingly to the standards of the neighborhood, then I have a little problem with it, but not enough to overturn. That's just my feeling with it. And I'm not arguing with the colleagues, I cannot zone the design of a house, I can only zone the property. I've been here quite a little bit of time, and if I go back to Beta Bay and Bay Shore Boulevard, City paid over three and a half million dollars on a piece of property because we tried to design the building, not the land. From my experience tells me, listen carefully, vote your conscience, and I may not always be right, I admit that, but be careful of what may be coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miranda. Any further discussion?
And I will say, Mr. Miranda, you're right, they can split this in half now and tear down the house. That's not what they're gonna do though. That's why they're asking for our permission to do it the way they want to do it. And I, I understand where your point is, okay, and you're right, the underlying land, if they want to tear down the house and make it 75 and 75, they have more than a right to do it, but they're not gonna do that. That's the only reason that it becomes more of an issue for us. You know, I, I'm not trying to tell them what to do, I'm just telling them that they could do it now, as admitted by their attorney, so...
Counselwoman Mccapin?
They don't have to tear the house down, they have to cut. I had a porch like that, that I took off. I know what they're talking about, you just...
I, I don't think they want to do that either, no.
No, they don't, they don't, but really, it's, it's there. It is, it is, the land is saying, the use of the land, the zoning, the way it stands right now, it can be done. So in order, so all we're talking about is moving it so that it does not touch the house, it does not destroy any part of that house, but they can do it as it stands right now. And so, we'll be okay. I'm done.
If there's no other discussion, if you could call the question.
Yes, sir, we have a motion, but now, was there a friendly amendment to that by Councilwoman Cohen?
I think Councilwoman Cohen had made an amendment, added a couple of other items on there, which I accepted, and hopefully the clerk got that all down.
Just making sure, okay. We have a motion by Councilwoman Suarez, and I believe there was a second by Councilwoman Maniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Dwayne? To deny?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Motion to deny carried with Capeen and Miranda voting no. And red caps.
Okay, thank you, sir.
If I may, somebody left their glasses up front. Yes, we're done.
We now go to item twelve.
Mary Saminiego, Land Development Coordination, the next item on your agenda is REZ nineteen oh five. It's a rezoning request for seventy-two fourteen North Fortieth Street from RM twenty-four to PD for business professional office and professional services.
Good evening, councilmembers. Jennifer Malone with your planning commission staff. This is located on North Fortieth Street. And we have Fortieth Street right here, this is East Crawford to the south, and the Hillsborough River. There's a, a mix, and if you can't hear me anytime, just let me know, but I'm just going to keep on going. There is a little bit of a mix of some single-family and commercial in the area along North Fortieth Street. The subject site is Community Mixed Use Thirty-five. This is actually, it says Community Mixed Use Thirty-five on the future land use map, but that's actually all right-of-way. It just hasn't been corrected yet, but this is the subject site, and it abuts to North Fortieth Street. And this is residential ten behind it, which is a single-family detached future land use designation. Tonight, I actually have, oh, and it's also in the University Planning District, a level E evacuation zone. To the north, sorry, those, to the north of the subject site, the white, that's, those are apartment buildings. And before you tonight, I actually have a planning commission inconsistency. We did not find this consistent with the comprehensive plan. You might recall that Fortieth Street went through a planning process in about twenty-ten timeframe. Through that visioning process and that community plan, we have policies related to Fortieth Street within our comprehensive plan that were added via text amendment, as well as there was even a map amendment associated with it. We found that this did not further those policies related specifically to Fortieth Street. The building before you in this planned development is more of a typical suburban design with parking place in the front. We did find that that's inconsistent with the form envisioned under the Fortieth Street plan that was looking for a more urban form. And that is also generally seen too, as well, under the community's mixed-use corridors, which is, which this is on. So it, it was encouraged that this would be more of a pedestrian-oriented building, with the building placed at the front of Fortieth Street, active ground uses with parking place in the rear of the structure. And so that was the form that was desired in this area of the city, and we found that the planned development was not meeting that, per those policies in the comprehensive plan. That concludes my presentation, so it is inconsistent, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? Thank you.
Mary Saminiego, Land Development Coordination, as I stated, this is a rezoning request for RM twenty-four to PD for a business professional office and personal services. Jennifer showed you an aerial of the property. Here is a zoning map of the property. You can see that it's on Fortieth Street. It has double frontage on Fortieth Street, as well as hut in place. The subject property is in green. To the south of it, these lots are actually all city-owned right-of-way. All of this area is already zone commercial general, and the property to the far north was recently rezoned as commercial general as well. Debate, the site is currently vacant. The applicant is proposing to construct a twenty-seven, I'm sorry, two thousand seven hundred and twenty square feet building with a mixture of business professional office and personal service uses with associated parking. There are four waivers being requested. The first one is to pay into the tree trust fund for mitigation not located on-site, to be added between first and second reading. The second waiver is to reduce the required parking for fourteen, parking spaces down to nine, that does thirty-six percent reduction. The applicant has agreed to, and it will be noted on the site plan, that only a portion of the building could be used for personal service, which has a much higher parking count, and the remaining portion of the building would be professional office. Even with that, it's still a thirty-six percent parking reduction. Transportation and Land Development Coordination both found this application consistent because of that parking waiver reduction. Similarly to reduce, there is a waiver to reduce the required use-to-use buffer along the north. There's an apartment complex to the north, it's required a fifteen-foot buffer with a CMU wall. They're requesting to go down to ten feet with a wooden fence. And then the last waiver is the vehicle use area buffer to the south. There are some changes between first and second reading. Primarily, the most substantive one between first and second reading is to relocate the ADA space to the south in an effort to save some additional trees on the northern part of the property. So that's embedded within the revisions in the staff report. There are some revisions through transportation. Again, transportation found it inconsistent because of the parking waiver. And natural resources had two pages of revisions. Other than that, overall, the Development, View and Compliance staff did find this inconsistent as well because of the large parking waiver at thirty-six percent. I know the applicant will make a presentation, but do you have any questions for me at this time?
Any questions from counsel? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Applicant, please.
Good evening, my name is Kerry Sullivan, and I think I want to address the very first little thing that came up. Can I? Do not touch. What do I have to do to show more of this on the, on the screen?
You want to scroll this way?
Need to go up.
That way?
Yeah, need to get all of it on here.
Well, you can't get all.
Okay.
That's as far as you can get, and to zoom it down, you just scroll, push it down.
Okay, thank you very much. The main issue that, that I'm, I want to address at this point, I want to start out, is turning the building sideways. The owner is definitely adamant about not doing that from a practical standpoint, that doesn't make any sense. As far as advertising, now that mean I have a short side of the building facing Fortieth Street. Signage is a direct function of the square footage that you have. So now, instead of a long building, where I can get all the signage on it for all the individual people that's in there, I'm just going to have this little slither facing Fortieth Street. What I have before you now are, I took, I did, I did a survey from Hillsborough to Bush, going down Fortieth. This shows, the ones I'm showing you, the twenty-two buildings, which represent approximately eighty-two percent of the structures down Fortieth Street from, from the two areas that I, I mentioned. And all of these buildings, they have parking in the front. Some was built a couple months ago, some was built maybe a year ago. But my point is, all the way down that corridor, they have parking in front. So I'm, I'm just asking some kind of common sense to allow my client to do that. As far as the other inconsistencies changing, you know, we don't have a problem with that. We're going to do everything we can to comply. Shifting the disabled down to the other end is fine. Hopefully, we have the wall, a waiver from a block wall to a, a frame wall. If you look at the site, it's almost impossible to turn that building the way they want it. By the time you get, I can show you the tree table. The red circles are a protective radius you got to have for the trees. So we have trees, we have this huge tree on this side of lot, have trees here, trees on that side. If you turn it this way, now, you still have to stay away from this, this tree on this side, and you're cutting into only place you can have retention. Because you can't have the tree, the tree barricade, the tree circumference can't have a retention pond in it. So we're pretty much stuck with the way the lot is now. So we're trying to do the best we can, we're trying to get eighty pounds of dog food in a ten-pound bag. And it's, and it's hard, but when you have to answer to so many agencies to try to make everybody happy. We're just doing the best we can with what we got. This just shows the plan, what we're going to comply with making the barber shop, the size it needs to be for, for the personal services. And so we cut that down to meet peripheral services, so we can cut down the, the amount of parking. The personal services has the most high demand for parking, so that's why we made it smaller. The occupancy is on it, the barber shop's going to have nine people, and then the other assigned, unassigned people, who don't know yet, but they're going to have to be professional businesses, by the, by the way your city is going to set up. The way we want to do it, this is how it's going to look going down Fortieth Street in this front elevation, okay? Like I said, the, the signage is a function of the square footage that you have for the building, for the frontage. So we can put plain signs delineating where the people are on the inside of the building. If we do, or the city's requesting us, this is what you're going to have facing Fortieth Street. This, this right side elevation, and I can't, I can't fathom the logic behind that, and you know, just in my, my little mind. My client. This is where he is now, where it says Jazz It Up Barber Shop. He's been there for how many years? Ten years. Before that, he was right down the street at his other barber shop. How long was he there? Ten years. Twenty years he's vested in this community, so he's not, he's not a flipper, he's not a developer, he's going to be here tomorrow and then go on the next day, okay? Because he has a vested interest in the neighborhood, he loved the neighborhood, that's where his clientele is. So that's what he wants to do. Right now, if you look at where he is now, you can see the little parking spaces you have for the entire strip of land. There are restaurants there, there's two restaurants, there's a hookah lounge, there's a beauty salon, a barber shop, and an unassigned area, which will require much more parking than what we were going to have when we moved to the new building. So, all things considered, I'm just asking that you grant this waiver. Any questions?
Any questions from counsel?
A question, a couple things. One, the original location where his place is at now, didn't we rezon, didn't we rezon something for one of the uses there, maybe the hookah lounge or something? It looks familiar to me.
It wasn't, I wasn't part of it.
Maybe by you, but I'm, I remember we had to deal with some of the parking issues that were at that location, if I'm not mistaken.
When Fortieth Street came through, it took a lot of land.
Oh, no, no, I know, it took, it took a lot of frontage on there.
Yeah.
And so, right now, it looks like, and if I'm looking at the plan right, I just want to make sure I have it right. You've got Fortieth Street there, and then you've got the parking in the front, and what has been requested by staff and by the, the inconsistency is that they want to move it up closer to the, to the street, is that what it is? I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out what you're...
They want to turn it sideways.
They want to turn it sideways?
Yes.
Okay. With it further towards, away from the retention pond, or towards where the retention pond is at? Do you follow what I'm saying? Whereas the access would still be where it's at now, right?
Yeah, but if you...
But it would be turned sideways.
If you turn it sideways, the, the retention pond is history, because the building's going to be until the retention pond.
Yeah. No, no, I just want to make sure, I've just, I want to make sure I got this right, because I'm trying, I was a little bit confused with, with what you had said versus what, what they had said. And it seemed to me like some of the objections from the, from the planning commission has to do more with the way that it fits in or doesn't fit into the division plan, as, as far as what I'm reading on here. In addition, was there, was there attempt by the staff or by you to move the, move that frontage up towards the retention pa, plan, meaning the, the building itself, shortened it, and then put the parking in the back, and maybe elongate it on the other side? I mean, I don't know if that was tried.
I tried it, but I didn't present it to them.
I mean, not sideways, I mean, but, but you would, you would truncate it and then make it a little bit like an L-shaped. That's the only, yes, I would say, you know?
I tried other designs, but nothing that was more efficient than this. I didn't present that to them, it's just something I did, trying to work it out.
Got it, got it, okay. I appreciate it, thank you.
Along the same lines of Mr. Suarez, I'm just trying to figure out if there was a long way in a little L, wouldn't you gain five or six other parking spaces? I'm not, I don't know, I'm just asking.
Say it again, sir?
No.
He has to say, repeat the question.
If the building, instead of facing the way it is, it would be like this, with a little L, long hair, and then a little L, and you, wouldn't you pick up more parking spaces? In other words, you're trying to fit, like you said earlier, ten pounds of something in an eight-pound bag, and it ain't fitting.
No.
I'm not against the project, I just say that...
No, I understand, but, but, but like I said earlier, I've tried everything I could do. I've tried different shapes, I've tried turning it, and, and one, one problem just started dominoing, started dominating other problems. Anytime you do something, in one area, it's going to affect something else.
You're kidding me?
So this is a lesser of two evils, what I would do. This is a lesser of two evils, in my opinion, trying to get it to work.
Anything further from counsel? Thank you very much, sir. Anything further from yourself?
Oh, no, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone here for public comment on item number twelve?
Good evening, counsel, I'm James McKay, and I'm the president of the Temple Creek Civic Association. I'm a thirty-nine-year resident of the neighborhood, and was, as you know, our civic association was responsible for getting Fortieth Street widened years ago. And as the presenter said, all the other buildings on Fortieth Street face Fortieth Street. In our meeting of our civic association this past Monday, the presenters put their plan forth, and it was enthusiastically endorsed by the membership who voted unanimously to come, have me come before you and give us, or give them our blessing. This is not a difficult problem to solve, it's, I think it would be a great addition to the neighborhood, have a longtime businessman there, and I would urge you to go ahead and accept this plan as it's presented. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here for public comment on item number twelve? Okay. Any rebuttal from the applicant? Any rebuttal, sir? Mr. Sullivan, rebuttal? Anything further? Okay, thank you. Okay. We, we have a motion closed by Councilman Cohen, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I, I don't know who I was next, I'll just start. Councilman Suarez, do you wish to read item twelve, sir?
I present an ordinance for first reading consideration, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of seven-two-one-four North Fortieth Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification, RM twenty-four residential multifamily, to PD planned development, personal services, and business professional office, providing an effective date.
Second.
And including the, any revision sheet that is presented by staff.
We have a motion by Councilman Suarez, a second by Councilwoman Capeen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carried with Reddick being absent, second reading and adoption to be held on April...
on April eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, at nine-thirty a.m.
And the final countdown goes to number fourteen.
Mary Semeniego Land Development Coordination, item number fourteen is RAZ nineteen zero eight. It is a rezoning request for the properties at thirty-three zero four and thirty-three zero six West Saint Joseph Street, from RS fifty to PD for detached single-family residential.
Good evening, council members. I'm here to pass out. Well, before I begin, I have some corrected staff reports for the record. I've never had to do that before, but there's a first time for everything, and it's tonight. The rezoning before you today is on Saint Joseph Street, it's in the central Tampa Planning District, has very convenient access to public transportation, there's four heart routes that serve us in evacuation zone E. It is southwest Columbus Drive. This is the subject site, we have West Columbus Drive, I believe there's a grocery and a bakery in these commercial uses. And then this is the subject site, and this is north, north Lincoln, right here. These are residential, and these are the commercial uses along West Columbus Drive, which is gonna be reflected on my future land use map. The red is Community Commercial Thirty-five, that allows up to commercial intensive uses. This, the subject site is Residential Twenty, that's the brownish color, and then it transitions in density to Residential Ten, as we move south. We did find this consistent, the future land use is Residential Twenty, that allows a decent amount of, that allows up to twenty dwelling units to the acre, the, well within what the applicant is proposing through this planned development, we did find that it would be compatible with the surrounding area, and that concludes my presentation.
Any questions by council? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mary Semeniego Land Development Coordination, Jennifer kind of reviewed the overall area, so I won't belabor the point. Basically, with this rezoning application at these properties, they are proposing two single-family lots, one with the existing house, and a new lot for proposed house. It's currently zoned RS fifty. The issue is that the lot, the overall lot is a hundred by ninety-five, so they cannot create two fifty-by-a-hundred lots, because the lots are short, they're five feet short from the hundred-foot lot depth. There are no waivers being requested, so that's the only issue. RS fifty is the smallest Euclidean zoning district we have for single-family lots, therefore they have to request a PD, because they can't meet the minimum lot area of five thousand square feet, because they're short approximately two-hundred-and-fifty square foot each. So that is the only variation, they're complying with all of the RS fifty standard setbacks, height, et cetera. So the only kind of difference between this project and a standard RS fifty lot split, which city council would not see, is the, they're short a little bit in the area, but still within the realms of allowable density within the land use category. Saying that, the Development Committee of Compliance Staff has reviewed the application and found the request consistent with the City of Tampa Code of Ordinances.
Thank you, any questions from council?
Just one statement, aren't the rest of the lots in that street the same way?
Yes, they are, sir. That's how they originally flat it.
It's the depth, it's not the width.
It's not the width, I did not do the red-blue map, it's just the depth.
Yeah, between there and Saint Louis.
Yes.
So if they were five feet...
Bieber, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be here. Yes? Okay. She's going. Good.
Thank you, ma'am, applicant, please.
Good evening, members of the council, I think this is gonna be the easiest case in all your, you know, records. Yes, my name is Gabriel...
Last guy that said hi was a noob.
No, it's gonna be, my name is Gabriel Navarrete with Navarrete Drafting Inc., and representing Mr. Camilo Gongora, a friend of, and a customer of mine. As she explained, we're short by two-hundred-and-fifty square feet per lot that we want to create, if possible. And I think the key thing here is that, yes, you can see, as you can see, if you can see it. Okay, this is Mr. Camilo Gongora's lot. Within, within that lot, we have six properties, or seven properties, with the same size, the same size, that we want to create. If you go the lot downs and south to it, you have probably eighty percent of them. But if you go to the six blocks surrounding, about surrounding, because this is, to the north, it's just commercial, you're gonna have the same pattern in the center of the blocks, and then on the sides, on the, on the very end, is where you have lots a little larger, like fifty feet, fifty-six feet.
However, if you go, that's Saint Conrad, right, the last one? If you go just south of that, you're gonna find that the lot is sixty or fifty by about a hundred-and-fifty feet.
That, over here, on the, on the south, yes. That is, that is true, that is true. Yes, so we're seeking for that, you know, for you to allow us to build a second house with a lot that is two-hundred-and-fifty square feet shy, fifty wide, and we're short on that number. So, any questions? We're not asking for any waivers, variances, we're going to stay under the fifty percent rule of building coverage. So, pretty much that's our request.
Any questions from council? Thank you, sir. Anyone here to publicly comment on item fourteen? Motion closed by Councilman Miranda, second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, and I guess Councilman Cohen, if you don't mind handling item fourteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I move an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of thirty-three oh four and thirty-three oh six West Saint Joseph Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification, RS fifty residential, single-family to PD planned development residential, single-family detached, providing an effective change.
We have a motion by Councilman Cohen, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor? Any opposed?
Motion carried with Reddick being absent, second reading and adoption to be held on April eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, at nine-thirty a.m.
Thank you, and you are right, that was very easy.
I was right.
Muy fácil.
Thank you.
Okay, next, item...
Yeah. Just for spite.
Thank you. Item fifteen.
Item fifteen, the last item on your agenda tonight, is Mary Semeniego Land Development Coordination, RAZ nineteen seventeen for University of Tampa, rezoning from PDA and IG and CG to PDA for college/university.
Jennifer Malone with your planning commission staff, we're in the central Tampa Planning District, just outside of the, this is the Hillsborough River, and then this is the Central Business District off to the side, we're off of Kennedy Boulevard, it's the University of Tampa campus, and then I have North Boulevard that runs right through the This will look familiar to you, not only because it's the University of Tampa, but because we were before you recently with the future land use map amendment on the subject site. So as you'll notice, there's a couple of different colors on the map, there's public, rec open space, regional mixed use one hundred, general mixed use twenty-four, and then the plan amendment before you was to take all of this to public, quasi semi-public, that has been transmitted to the Department of Economic Opportunity per your motion, and it's being reviewed up in Tallahassee as I speak. In the meantime, we reviewed the planned development alternative, it is consistent, planning commission staff did not have any concerns with it. I did note in my staff report, just a, a policy, to, that the comprehensive plan does encourage these non-residential uses to remain sensitive and compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, but we do recognize that the campus is an established piece of Tampa's community fabric. That concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Any questions from council?
Mary Semeniego Land Development Coordination, with this application, the University of Tampa is, has acquired, I believe, or is in the process of acquiring some additional lands, focus there. These gray pieces are the new lands, so they need to be included in the overall campus plan, so therefore that's part of the reason for the planned development submittal that we have before you. The last time this was approved, this campus PDA plan was approved, was in fifteen oh one. You'll note in your staff report, seven of the existing waivers from fifteen oh one are carried forward onto this plan, and there are an additional of, four waivers being requested based on the current proposal. Per the plan of development, no modifications are proposed for the historic campus area. The total development entitlements include four-point-eight million square feet of development, which includes a total of six thousand beds, previously, the not, twenty, the twenty-fifteen plan was for five thousand beds, they're asking for six thousand beds now, so that's an increase of one thousand beds. Similarly, the existing approved square footage was one-point-eight million square feet, now they're asking for, totting went for two-point-five million square feet. So that's an increase of seven-hundred thousand square feet. Based on the increased beds and the increased square footage, their parking requirements have increased. And this is, I'm going into the first new waiver, which is waiver number eight, stated on page two of your staff report, they're asking to reduce the required number of parking spaces from fifty-five hundred square, fifty-five hundred parking spaces to forty-four hundred parking spaces, which is a reduction of eleven hundred parking spaces, which is a twenty percent reduction overall. Transportation and land development staff has found this application inconsistent because of that parking waiver, twenty percent, or eleven hundred parking spaces total. The next waiver that they're requesting is to increase the maximum square footage, maximum ten-foot setback allowed on Kennedy Boulevard. For this area in here, there's a grand oak tree they need to preserve, which requires them to have a large protective radius that exceeds the maximum building setback for Kennedy Boulevard. So they're asking for that, waiver staff has no objections to that. To allow the principal building facade and functional pedestrian entries of residential buildings to be oriented away from Kennedy Boulevard and not maintain pedestrian access directly to public sidewalks. Again, as part of the campus plan, a lot of the buildings don't necessarily have to face Kennedy, they're asking that they can face the internal roadway network, which is consistent with the overall development pattern of the campus, staff has no objection. And I'll carry through from the twenty-fifteen plan with the wording changed slightly, to allow alternative lighting fixtures, poles, and related equipment to be consistent with the existing campus lighting plan, to be placed at locations as spacing approved by the City of Tampa and the Florida DOT. I'll let the applicant go into his complete analysis, complete presentation, sorry, it's getting a little bit late. But basically, the development compliance staff found this inconsistent with the land development code because of the twenty percent reduction, which equates to approximately eleven hundred parking spaces deficient. I believe that it's an issue of timing and construction, but I'll let the applicant speak to that. Do you have any...
Any questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm out of, I'm out, I'm out of juice, yeah.
Good evening, city council, Morris Massey, one oh one, East Kennedy Boulevard, Suite thirty-seven hundred, here in Tampa, on behalf of the University of Tampa, and I know it's been a very long night, and we're all really tired. Mary described the purpose of the rezoning accurately. Another reason, I mean frankly, as you all are aware, the University of Tampa has transformed itself over the last several years. I mean, the campus is totally different, it's a vibrant, growing campus. And one of the reasons we're here before you tonight is frankly to seek an increase in the cap on enrollment. Currently, under the PDA, the cap is at eighty-five hundred, we are at about eighty-three hundred full-time students at this point in time. So we're asking that go up to eleven thousand. There are long-term plans in place for the expansion of the campus, and so this is all part of this process that we're going through and why we're here tonight. The parking waiver seems to be the major issue, and so that's why I'm gonna focus my conversation on tonight, and not go into any other detail unless you all have questions about it, and we're happy to answer any other questions you might have about the PDA request. We think there's several unique factors that justify the parking waiver in this circumstance. First, the university has recently, a couple of years ago, has passed a policy where freshmen are not allowed to have cars on campus, and there's no parking, they have no parking privilege on campus. Last year, the entering class at the University of Tampa was twenty-one hundred, twenty-one hundred freshmen. The parking ratio under the city parking code is point-five parking spaces per student. If you multiply that, then there are a thousand and fifty spaces that are basically wiped off the table because the freshmen are not allowed to have cars on campus any longer. Also, as you all are aware, the University of Tampa is largely a residential campus, about sixty percent of the students live on campus, obviating the need necessarily for cars to get to and from the campus. Also, a large percentage of the students that do not live on campus live in close proximity. Again, as you all are aware, a number of multifamily projects have been approved in downtown and on the west side of the river recently. You've got Altus Grand Sun Trail that's going up, a large number of students live at the Berrymore near the Straz, I can see them biking and walking to campus every day. I go over to the Development Services Center, they're crossing Cass Street there to come over to campus. But you have a number of projects in downtown, nine fifteen, you've got the Manor Riverwalk on the west side of the river at the old Tribune Site, a large number of students live in these complexes, they live over in the Bleeker Project in Hyde Park, so NoHo Flats, Aurora, Post Hyde Park, there's a number of projects. And also, a number of them, a large number of them live in Harbor Island or in the Channel District, frankly. And all these places are within walking and biking distance. And frankly, over the last few years, really the major transit need that the university has is not additional parking, but it's been biking spaces. And so the university has gone on a program to increase the number of biking spaces on campus. Currently, the university has four hundred biking spaces existing on campus. If the university was in the Central Business District, that amount of biking spaces on campus would automatically qualify them for a reduction of two-hundred-and-fifty required parking spaces. Because your Central Business District regulations allow up to twenty percent of the required parking to be serviced by bicycle spaces, two bicycles, two bicycle spaces per one car space. And we think the same policy should apply here, we're on the periphery of the downtown area, and quite frankly, students are much more likely to bike from their apartment building in downtown than white-collar workers are willing to bike to work. So it really, it probably serves really the University of Tampa much more than it does serve the Central Business District, that policy. Also, you know, I know that transit options and, and has been a big issue that we face as a community, but if there's one area where there are different transit options other than just a car, it's downtown and the University of Tampa. I want to hand out to you all, this comes from the university website, transportation options, and then the Bike UT program. And what this highlights, going to Bike UT, UT has a bike rental program much like Coast Bikes, which you can also rent throughout the Central Business District and around UT. But Campus Rec has a bunch of bikes, that if you have a UT student ID, you can go ahead and rent it for free, and you go down to Publix, or go, you know, go where you need to go. Also, as the, as the handout suggests, because it's in, it's close to the Central Business District, and it's in the downtown special district as well, students and faculty have access to the Downtowner. You've got two heart routes that go to, to the campus, you have Route thirty that goes on Kennedy Boulevard that connects downtown to the airport, and then you have Route seven that goes from downtown to Cass Street, and then up North Boulevard. Also, the campus is in close proximity to the Marion Street Transit Way, which is the focal point of all the heart transit lines, including the express, express lines that come into downtown. You also... You also have the street car system, you have the water taxi, you have Coast Bike. The university has a Zip Car that, that students can use. So there are a number of different options other than having a car to go to and from campus. Also, as part of this PDA, Heartline has requested, and the university's agreed, to make improvements to two Heartline bus stops adjacent to camp, the campus on Kennedy Boulevard. Other factors that are, I think are important for City Council to consider in connection with this waiver request, and let me put this on, up on the Elmo, it's part of your zoning package, it's the ear rail view of the campus, right here. Even though the campus is on the periphery of downtown, it's, it's close to everything, it is a self-contained campus in many ways geographically. And let me point out what I, what I'm saying, and this, I think addresses some of the staff's concern that by granting a parking waiver, you may create issues for the surrounding neighborhood. On the east side, you've got the Hillsborough River in downtown. There's really no option for students to park cars unless they want to pay a huge rate at the, one of the parking garages downtown, or unless they live in one of the apartment buildings and they have a right to park there. Then on the south side, you've got Kennedy Boulevard in a fairly heavy commercial district that goes all the way down to the Crosstown Expressway, where the parking is really all controlled by large business entities like Tampa General and our internal. On the east side of the campus, you have, what is it, Warehouse District primarily, where the parking is controlled again by the owners of the warehouses, and then you have the old Furman Site, which is controlled by TGH. And again, there's really no opportunity for the parking to spill in that area. To the north, you have Tampa Prep. Again, they can't park at Tampa Prep. And north of that, you've got the Julian Lane Park, and they won't be able to park there either, or they'll be towed. I think there's some concern with the neighborhood to the northwest, but quite frankly, the bulk of the campus really is oriented toward the river and south toward Kennedy. So if you're living downtown or in, on the west side of the river or Harbor Island or even Channel Side, you're much more likely frankly to bike or walk to campus because by the time you're able to find somewhere to park six or seven blocks northwest of campus, and then you have to walk all the way to Plant Hall, which is another a kilometer or six or seven blocks frankly once you get on campus, it's, it just doesn't make sense. So we, we think that frankly, if there are traffic issues as a result of this waiver, it's going to really affect the University of Tampa and will not spillover into the neighborhoods as, as a concern. The other thing, and Mary mentioned this, part of the reason for this request is the timing of development and the growth of the university. Currently, we have 4,165 parking spaces. With this PDA approval, hopefully, we will probably increase that to between 4,200 and 4,300. So we're very close to the .5 threshold right now. But the long-term plans of the university, there are going to be additional dorms and buildings built. The university has grown every year for 22 years, so the enrollment's going to continue to grow. There are plans ultimately for another large parking garage near the pool area, but that's not, that's, that's not gonna happen in the immediate future. This university has been an enormous catalyst for redevelopment along Kennedy and on the west side of the river. We don't think it's really in the best interest of either the university or the city to try to halt development because of a parking issue. Ultimately, with the construction of the parking garage and additional surfing, surface parking lots, we probably will come back up close to that .5 threshold, but at this point in time, we're asking that be lower to .4. And then finally, unlike most petitions that come before you, the university and this PDA are, I think, special. I mean, the university and the city have a symbiotic relationship. The city is the university's landlord for much of the campus. Also, this PDA has been amended twice since it was, since it was originally adopted in 2002, and the university continues to expand geographically. They actually have purchased additional property on the west side of the CSX railroad tracks. We are not pulling that in at this point in time because we want to be sensitive to the West Tampa overlay, and we want to work with your staff and the neighborhood before we bring that in, but we're going to have to amend this PDA in the not-too-distant future. And frankly, the university continues to evolve, its programs continue to evolve, so that requires changes to the conditions to the PDA. What I'm saying is, if there is a parking issue, we're going to be back before you and probably in the next two or three years maximum, so that you will be able to address at that point in time. So for those reasons, we think that in this case, the waiver's justified. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, comments?
Chair. By the way, Mr. Massey. Oh, I apologize. I, I thought, did you go on me, or you want Ms. Kepine to go first?
I believe you went first, and then Councilman Kepine, I believe. And then Councilman Miranda.
You, it's been so long, I think you came here with out of beard. Because you've been here all night.
I feel, I feel a little bit that way, yes, sir.
Yeah. Two, it's heart, not Heartline, okay?
Yes, sir.
Third, 25% of the, 22% of the people that go to school at UT use the Downtowner, and they come from Channel Side primarily.
Yep.
Okay? Even though there is one house in my neighborhood in Riverside Heights that they call the Frat House, because this weekend being St. Patrick's Day, there will be a lot of drunk people in my neighborhood.
Apologize.
And that's not a usual thing, and I just want to point that out. Has there ever been any kind of idea in terms of how you can massage this a little bit better with your client, the University of Tampa, to try and figure out other transit ways of solving some of these parking problems, as opposed to, as what you had just mentioned, building a parking garage right by the pool? And then the second part of that is, isn't there a restriction? And maybe there isn't. I think it's only in the Central Business District about parking near the river.
Well, the historic campus encompass a lot of the riverfront.
Right.
So there really is not much availability to park cars near the river. And also, that's the prime real estate. You don't want to use that area as, in the Central Business District, there's, there's concerns about using that for parking. Yeah, I mean, so the historic district, the historic portion of the campus, I mean, it goes up to the new Student Services Center that's just been rebuilt, and then you have the library, then you've got this, what was the old Tampa Prep Building, which is the Science Center. There's really no availability to put parking on the river. There's really very little in the way of surf, we have acquired a surface parking lot on the south side of Kennedy that we're incorporating here. We are also bringing in what is a weird triangular shape on, just on the west side of the CSX railroad tracks that we're, we're going to turn to the surface parking. We're taking every opportunity that we can to incorporate additional parking into the campus, but there, there is a limit to what we can do physically at this point in time.
I guess my point in asking you that is that whether or not there is a way that we can find some alternatives to providing more parking, because I think that you're landlocked literally unless you keep expanding, and so you're gonna be, keep coming back here, like you said, in two years to, to, you know, put more parking in, you know, there's gotta be a better way of doing it. And it's not, and it's not necessarily indicative of not being able to produce this or to, or to get it passed. It's just that, you know, you keep coming back for more and more and more. We gotta figure something out.
Well, I mean, part of the, part of, part of the reason we keep coming back is that the university is growing, and it is acquiring land, additional land for, for parking, for additional buildings, for, I mean, it is a, it is an amazing story frankly. I mean, when I first moved to Tampa, the University of Tampa was having problems financially and having problems with keeping, you know, having a decent student by you. I think it was less than 2,000 students. And now, it is, you know, it's budding up toward 9,000, and they're, they're moving toward 11,000. It's an amazing story. And so, you know, it is one of the challenges of being an urban university where you, you're dealing with these issues. The university has aggressively looked for additional land adjacent to it in order to address parking, but also to address facilities, because as it grows, I mean, there, there are plans for a new fine arts center, there's going to be new, new classrooms. It's not just beds and parking, it's just a lot of different things going on there. Given, and it's, it's, it's a great story frankly, in my opinion, but I, but I mean, there are tensions, so.
Yeah. Thanks. Councilman Kepine?
Yes, I just wanted you to know that I know you didn't come in with a beard, and you waited all the public. I'll stay them.
Yes, ma'am.
That's it. And I want to tell you, I'm just gonna say this, I'm not gonna say what year I started the University of Tampa, and there were 600 students. 600. It was smaller than my high school. Pretty cool. That's it. Good job.
It's a cool story.
Well, I, what you've mentioned, if I may, Madam Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank Dr. Vaughn for what he's done there, and this board, and the people who've given, the ladies and gentlemen of those, given and raised millions of dollars to make it what it is. You know, it's larger now in enrollment than Princeton and Wake Forest, and I think it has students from 154 countries, and that makes Tampa what it is today, part of it. I'm not saying all of it. And the other part is that we only have two seasons, summer and Christmas, and everybody's happy here. I think they are, until tonight. But thank you again, appreciate it.
And I have to point out that unlike Princeton and Wake Forest, doesn't appear anybody's been indicted for paying to, paying to get.
I didn't want to go there. I didn't want to.
As a Wake Forest alum, be nice, okay?
Anything further?
Move to close.
And do we, and public comment? Anyone here for public comment on item number 15? Being none, we have a motion to close by Councilman Miranda, second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I believe it's Councilman Kepine.
Oh, it's me.
Oh, Councilman Maniscalco. My apologies.
It's him. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I have an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 401, 802, 909, and 1,005 West Kennedy Boulevard, 109 North Willow Avenue, and 112 and 115 North Edison Avenue in the City of Tampa, Florida, and will particularly describe in section run from zoning district classification, PDA plan development alternative, CG Commercial General, and IG Industrial General to PDA Plan Development Alternative, college/university private, providing an effective date.
We, we have a motion by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by that proud UT graduate, Charlie Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carried with Reddick being absent. Second reading and adoption to be held on April 18th, 2019 at 9:30 a.m.
Okay, now information reports and motions. Councilman Suarez.
I have seven items here. None, none at all. Happy, happy St. Patty's Day. Hopefully, some of us will be in the parade this weekend.
Councilman Cohen. Councilman Maniscalco. Councilman Kepine.
Yes, I have a public announcement. Free shot clinic from the Humane Society of Tampa Bay, Four Dogs, on April the 6th, 2019, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. I mean, yeah, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. River Tower Park at 401 East Bird Street. And if you have any questions, 813-252-2027. And it says, please announce. So there you go.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, that's right. First time. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Miranda.
Yes, sir. We start on Thursday and finish on Friday.
There you go.
Wow, that's cool.
Nothing here. Any motion?
Motion filed.
We have a motion by Councilman Cohen, second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everybody.